Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Dodg Middle School Showcase. I apologize for sort of a light crowd. We had some unforeseen circumstances with a couple of our board members. But if we can start with the roll call piece.
Ms. Fady Henny. Mr. Kripo.
Here.
Ms. Harrigan. Ms. Hellrich. Mr. Perrin-Gini. Ms. Sobel.
I'm here.
Ms. Boddy.
Here.
We do not have a floor. But that's okay. That's okay. Okay. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. And now we have a school partnership award, which is for Dodg Middle School, which is very convenient. At this evening's meeting, the recipient of the school partnership award will be recognized. I'm sorry that Mr. Perrin-Gini isn't here. But we will introduce, allow me to introduce the school's recipients, Kristen Kurtz and Laura Palmer. The Parent Teacher Association is an important integral part of every school, and the support the Dodg PTA contributes to the faculty and families is both unparalleled and appreciated. The Dodg family has been very fortunate to have the wonderful assistance of the PTA, as it has provided abundantly for items and experiences that have benefited the students. One of the goals of Dodg Middle School is to be a welcoming and workplace for students, staff, parents, and visitors. The school's front garden areas around the school sign and elsewhere are always blooming with different flowering plants, making the scenery both colorful and attractive. Often, the main entrance can be found adorned with seasonal plants, which helps give visitors a warm welcome. The Dodg PTA is responsible for all of this, but the last two years have been exceptional due to the hard work and creativity of Kristen Kurtz and Laura Palmer. Palmer. On various days of the year, these two would be weeding and pruning and mulching, sometimes in extreme heat. These ladies have gone beyond the usual beautification of Dodg Middle School, and their efforts are wholly appreciated. Dodg's gardens have never looked better or been more welcoming. Dodg Middle School, thanks. Dodg Middle School, thanks to Kristen and Laura for making the outside of Dodg beautiful and welcoming. Mr. Sobel, if you want to be here, I will let you do the introductions for the rest of our room.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sobel. Good evening, everyone. Well, good evening. Well, good greetings. We could be a little bit more lively than that tonight. Tonight is a great opportunity that we have several times a year in our school system to showcase some of the great work that occurs at each level throughout the district. So earlier this year in November, we had an elementary school showcase and saw what we were doing with math at the elementary level. Later this year in May, we'll have a showcase at Cheshire High School. But tonight is reserved for the middle school. And one of our two district focus areas is social-emotional learning, the other being complex thinking. But tonight's presentation is really going to talk a lot about all of the things that Dodg has done this year around something called restorative practices. And over the summer, our administrative team had the opportunity to work with a consultant who's done a lot of great work across Connecticut, a gentleman by the name of Joe Brummer, who started our work around the road, down the road of restorative practices in our schools. And I don't want to steal too much of the middle school's thunder, because I know that they'll tell you really what that looks like and how that translates. And more importantly, you'll get to hear from our students about what it means for them, the practice, and how it impacts them. And I want to just in advance thank our teachers from Dodg Middle School, who not only dedicated a lot of time in learning restorative practices and putting this presentation together, but also being here tonight. So without further ado, I'd like to welcome Dodg Middle School Principal Mike Woods.
Thank you, everyone. Mike, do you need the mic for this today? Yeah. Wrong mic tonight, sorry. Thank you, everyone. So tonight's presentation about restorative practices really is a great reflection. Each year, we try to get something that the middle school is doing, something that we're trying out, or something that's new. Last year, we had our maker space before we talked about advisory. So this year, we are talking about restorative practices. As Superintendent Solan said, we'll be hearing in a moment kind of how we started getting into this, and how we're going to go about what the future is going to look like for restorative practices. But first, I would like to introduce our team who's presenting tonight, so you guys can all come up. We have our Assistant Principal, Mr. John Peresino. We have our 7th grade special ed teacher, Ms. Sandy Fern. We have an 8th grade LA teacher, Ms. Kathy Carvici. And we have 7th grade social studies teacher, Mr. Ryan Cody. And we'll be presenting as time goes through. As Superintendent Solan said, in taking a look at our district goals surrounding social-emotional learning, we really wanted to focus especially on the practices that are going to demonstrate a clear focus on social-emotional growth. We've, over the past few years, have started seeing some trends. I believe it was last year's budget, we started talking about students who had needs, and we really advocated for a new social worker. We got that position. We're grateful for it, but I think some of the things that we're realizing more and more now, as the elementary principals have told me, that we still see some kids who need some support in that social-emotional realm. Some of the trends that we take a look at in dealing with kids, we deal with students with anxiety, and that can be a wide range of anxiety. We're definitely seeing the increased prevalence diagnosed with anxiety, either on a 504 plan or through an IEP. Or there are times that we find out students have anxiety just by talking with parents. You know, we notice some dips. We notice some heightened behaviors, and teachers reaching out to parents. We say, you know, "Listen, we're really seeing some patterns here." And sometimes parents will answer, "Oh, you know what? They didn't take their medication for their anxiety. We didn't know they had anxiety." So there's some pieces there that we see as well. The family dynamic is changing in our community, and we're seeing it as it went through the elementary schools. We're seeing it as it comes up to Dodg. Students are coming from different types of family structures, whether that be impacted through divorce, or we have a relative raising the children, or it's a single parent. Sometimes, it's a great co-parenting experience. Other times, it's a parent without a relationship, or with one parent. We have foster parents. We have families that are dealing with addiction with one or more parents as well. So we do have a lot of different types of family structures that are impacting our kids when they come. So when kids can't cope or handle some of the things that they're dealing with outside of the building, when they come into the building, we need to handle those experiences for the students so that they can be academically ready. We can't really hit the academics until we hit the social-emotional pieces as well. And there's also a trend that we're seeing with kids, and we just kind of sum it up as grit. Students lack healthy coping mechanisms to deal with some of these stressors, or we call trauma. And sometimes, they start to participate in some unhealthy coping mechanisms. And that can range from a lot of different things. Kids experiencing unhealthy eating habits, all the way up to cutting, or taking a look at vaping, or drugs, alcohol, those types of things. We refer to those as unhealthy coping mechanisms. As we go through this evening, we're going to be referencing in your folder, we have a couple of things for you to take a look at. On the right-hand side of the folder, we have two pamphlets that really deals with trauma. I know Mr. Peresino wants you to do that in a moment. And on the left-hand side, deals with a couple of studies as well.
So as Mr. Woods did nicely there, he kind of summed up a little bit, and what we want to do is dig into a little bit more of the why. Why are restorative practices important here at Dodg? I think when we look at these numbers on this slide, the intent of it is not to scare, but to kind of go a little bit further into the why and what we're facing at Dodg. The one thing that I would want to assure people is that this is not a situation that's unique to the Cheshire Public Schools district. This is not a situation that's unique to Dodg Middle School. This is being felt not just in Connecticut, but this is everywhere. This is the things that young teens and pre-teens are kind of facing. The first thing is, we want to get rid of the stereotype that this might be a special education issue. So if you take a look, right now, so far this year, we've had 39 crisis intervention referrals. And as you see, most of those students are coming from our regular education population. So these are not students that we were scheduling goals and objectives around counseling for. These are not students in their services that we're really planning those, you know, guidance and those therapy sessions for. These are just our regular students coming into the buildings every day. From those 39 referrals, we've had to call 211 22 times. That number, unfortunately, is being updated, was updated this week as we were putting the presentation together. And we're calling 211 services because students are talking about, or exhibiting self-harming behaviors. And we need to have the students assessed by 211 services to ensure their safety and make sure we're putting an appropriate program in place to help support those students. Unfortunately, we've had five students this year in intensive outpatient programs, which means those students are going home early, or going into these programs early on a partial school day, and they're working with programs such as Yale and kind of area clinics. And then on top of that, we've had some DCF referrals this year, having 10. Again, whether it's something that a student shared with us about family dynamics, or some type of educational neglect, that we've had to, as mandated reporters, call DCF. One thing, and I know this slide, my biggest fear with this slide is coming across really negative. One thing I want to say is that we can take real pride in ourselves, and the people in this room really should take a lot of pride in, is that we don't just focus in Cheshire on critical thinking, but we do focus on the whole child, and that social-emotional learning is our other initiative. And as a parent in Cheshire Public Schools myself, that's something I take a lot of solace in, and I think that's something that our leaders for our district really should take a lot of pride in, that we're focusing on that. One of the things that we've implemented was GAGL. And GAGL, if you're not familiar with it, but it has a couple of levels. The first level is imminent danger. If a student on their Chromebook or in their software, or if something was to get scanned, and it was felt that that student was in imminent danger, the company themselves, GAGL, would alert our police right away. The next level would be questionable content. With questionable content, GAGL will alert Mr. Woods or I at any point in time. We'll get an email saying there's some questionable content on a student that they'd like us to check out. You would take a look at it. This year, 24 times, we had questionable content. Of those times, six times, we either had to call 911 or 211 services. So that's to assure you that the decisions that you are making and the programs that you're trying to put in place are out there to catch students and to make sure we're appropriately supporting students. So that's six students that otherwise wouldn't have received help, and because of GAGL, you're able to provide that help for them. Sure.
Can you explain what a 211 services is?
Yeah, so basically, 211 services is an outside agency affiliated with the state?
Actually, there are several places that we go for. So Yale University has its own, we call Mobile Crisis Unit. So it's a mobile crisis unit. We use Wellmore, that's the third one in our area.
Wheeler.
And Wheeler. So they all have their Mobile Crisis Unit. And it's outside therapists that come in and provide the assessment. So when it's, you know, we kind of take a look, and we want to make sure that the child is safe, or they're safe for themselves, not harmed for themselves or others, we'll call them in. They might just say, you know what, they're fine. We've got the parents obviously involved in those types of things. Or other times, they might say, this child needs hospitalization, and we make those arrangements.
So basically, the first thing is kind of defining, understanding trauma. Childhood trauma is basically, it's a child's response to negative events that occur in their life. And students go into what we call fight, flight, or freeze. What does that look like in a classroom? It could look like school avoidance, kids afraid to come into school. It could look like students that are work avoidant, or it could present itself kind of in disruptive behaviors in the classroom. Understanding kind of trauma, as Mr. Woods said in your packet, is the ACEs Childhood Experience Survey. One thing I want to assure you in that, that's a document from the Connecticut State Department of Public Health. The back of it is the questionnaire that they used in the ACEs study. I just want to be very, very clear, this is not a questionnaire that we give our students, nor is it a questionnaire that we are planning on giving our students. But this is a questionnaire that was given to adults reflecting back on their childhood. And what it does, the reason why those 10 questions are asked, is those are the most common forms of trauma that adults reported that happened in their childhood. And what the studies have shown, it started in the late 90s, the Kaiser Permanente Pharmaceutical Group. And that study has been replicated, it's been done by 36 different states at this point, all pretty much with the same findings, in that children that, or the adults reporting yes on these ACE scores to having these traumatic experiences, significantly, it has an impact on their adult life, whether it be chronic diseases, you know, a feeling of not being able to make ends meet financially, drug and alcohol abuse. So it kind of clues into those different types of trauma. You know, insults, personal attacks, physical, sexual, emotional abuse, the sense of being loved, the family dynamic that Mr. Woods talked about, exposure to alcohol or drug abuse in the home, and then depression and mental illness. So those aren't the only forms of trauma that could occur in a child's life, it's just that study kind of talks about the most common ones. What we're talking about, and what our teachers will talk about now, are the restorative practices. And the restorative practices, the important thing to recognize with that is we're taking this issue on proactively from two fronts. One thing we know is the brain is malleable, and restorative practices, we can give our students the skills to help them with their emotions, to help them with relationship building, to help them cope with trauma throughout their life. And it could have a great impact on, it can really help lessen the impact of traumatic experiences for a child. And on the other front, what it's really doing is, throughout the school, it's setting up the environment for our students to be able to learn. We know that safety is the number one thing, so we want our children to feel safe when they're in schools. If they don't feel safe, we're never going to be able to tap into that critical thinking initiative. So these practices are setting up classroom environments, and setting up environments throughout the building that really make it a safe place, and it really continues from that responsive classroom that we know is happening in the elementary schools. And we're just trying to create that now for our middle school kids. And some of these practices are also happening at the high school as well. So now I'll turn it over to Ms. Carvici to talk about the practices at Dodg.
Thanks, John. I'll try to be careful with this, because I'm really loud even without a microphone. So I want to tell you a little bit about the training that we did. This past fall, we, 10 Dodg staff members, we took part in training with Joe Brummer, the consultant that Mike mentioned earlier. And we met in segments of two sessions at a time. Now, the focus of the training was both theory and application. So it was really great, because we got to spend some time learning about the details of trauma and restorative practices, but then also applying it and using the group of us 10 plus the CHS staff, and actually trying out some of the strategies while we were together. So that was really, really impactful for all of us. I think that the two most memorable parts of the training for me and a lot of the other people there were, number one, finding out more about what trauma really is, and how many of my students are impacted by trauma. It's shocking. And I mean, I've been in the classroom 19 years, and it's definitely a lot higher than it was 19 years ago. So that is both surprising and sad, and made the training feel like even more important. The other thing that was really surprising and powerful about the training was being a part of the circle itself. When we were learning how to do the circles, and Joe had us sharing in our group of 20 or so, you had this feeling of both vulnerability and power at the same time, because you were in this group, and it was much, it was very much a community, and people were really listening and really cared. And you could imagine that that would transfer really well into the classroom, definitely hitting on the social-emotional needs of the kids. So after those sessions, which were broken up into two, as I mentioned, there'd be about a month in between. And so the 10 Dodg staff members would come back to Dodg and experiment with some of the techniques that Joe had done with us. So this list includes all the different types of things that we've been doing with kids to see how effective this would be. So you can see it starts with things like mindfulness, which we were already experimenting with before this year, to an entire faculty and staff community building circle that John ran. Did we have 100 people maybe in that circle?
Awesome.
Which was awesome, and a really good introduction to the whole program. All the way down to small applications with just one-to-one mediations between kids. So Ryan and Sandy are going to give you really good details about some of the experimentation they've done in their classroom. But I can tell you from the group of 10 of us, that every time we've tried something, it's been a positive experience. We've had really good reactions from the kids, and I think that the videos that these guys are going to show you will tell it all.
Hello. So I went to this training in the fall with Joe Brummer and learned about restorative classroom, and I wanted to take away something that I could immediately apply in my classroom. So these community building circles seem like a pretty good choice to start off with. So to tell you a little bit about the circle and what it might look like, we sit in a circle. And the circle really fosters that idea of equality, everyone having a fair say. No matter who you are, whether you're the teacher, the student, administrator coming to the classroom, or anyone else, you join the circle and you're just a part of it. Everyone has a sense of power and a sense of leadership within it. There's a talking piece in the centerpiece. The centerpiece is something in the center that's a focal point. In it, you might post maybe some guidelines for the circle. You know, respecting everyone's fair share to have their own feelings heard, maybe, you know, sticking to the topic and not saying more than you need to. And there might be some other things in there that have some meaning to the person leading circle, or just to the classroom in general. And then the talking piece is something that is passed around, and it symbolizes whose turn it is to speak, and everybody should be respectful of that. So when I started these circles, the first time, I brought in something that was very meaningful to me personally. I kind of set that tone of, this is a respectful environment, you respect the talking piece, and also, you know, you might want to take this a little more seriously. I wanted to foster this idea of student ownership of the circles, though. So after the first circle that I ran in my classroom, I start up a signup sheet, let the kids bring in their own talking piece, something that's meaningful to them. So I remember after the first time running this and lay out toward my classroom, end of the school day, I post a signup sheet for the students. Here you go, signup, first come, first served, whoever signs it first, you get to bring it in, and you'll have your chance throughout the school year. And I went home that night, and I checked this document, and it was blank. Nobody had signed up, and I felt kind of defeated that maybe the kids just weren't that into it. And then I checked my email, and I have all these emails from students, say, "Mr. Cody, you forgot to give us edit access." Everybody wanted to sign up, and it was great, and it filled up right away. And the kids had brought in some really meaningful pieces to their own life. There was one student who brought in a hat that his grandfather wore in the military. Another student brought in a cancer ribbon that signified her aunt defeating breast cancer. Another student, I think when Mr. Peresino came and joined our circle, brought in a stuffed animal that she kept by her bedside to help her cope with her surgery that she had last year. So these things really developed into, you know, an important part of what we did in our classroom. We'd have a mindful moment to start our circles, and then I'd pose a topic or question. It could be lighthearted, or it could be something a little more serious. Some of the questions or topics that I posed to the kids are, "If you've got anywhere to eat in Cheshire, where are you going to go and where are you going to eat?" Very heated topic for them. Or something that is a little more serious, and I learned so much from the kids, "Where are you going to serve yourself in 10 years?" Can't tell you. Things that I learned about my own students I never would have known, and things I could share about myself that I normally wouldn't have shared with them. Then we have a little routine where we kind of close out the circle, and then we transition to our lesson. These circles last anywhere from 15 to 20 minutes, and I've been running them in my classrooms, or my classroom, once a week when I began. It was every Monday from late October to winter break. And then when we came back from the new year, we transitioned to every other week. So I want to play for you some student testimonials, just talking about their own experiences with the circles.
I think that circles have really been positive for the whole class, because it really just gives students a chance to share something else about them, because each week you can sign up to bring in something. It's called a talking piece, and it can be anything really important to you. There've been a lot of cool ones that have been brought in throughout the year. For example, some person brought in a replica of a shark's jaw with teeth. Somebody brought in an autographed hat about a sports team, and it just, like, it gives people a chance to learn more about them that they haven't learned more before. So I just think that it's a really cool opportunity for people.
What's positive is probably that when we're in a big classroom, kids don't usually get their own time to speak about their emotions and feelings. But when we have circle, we get our own, like, personal time to talk about what we were thinking and how our day was, and our teachers really get to see how we are individually rather than a whole classroom, and that's just a really nice, like, feeling. Some differences is when we do it, mostly the kids start smiling when they get to talk about how their day went, and they get to see that people recognized how they're feeling. And if they saw them during the day, they probably just talk to them about if anything was bothering them, and they get to really express how it happens.
So, you know, I was able to see what my students said during these circles, and they're sign up for the talking piece, it seems like they're pretty invested. But I wanted to put it to them, really hear from them personally, "Do you like this? Do you want to continue it?" So after I ran three circles in the middle of November, I created a survey, and I told them, "It's anonymous, I want your honest opinion, do you really like this or not? We don't have to continue it if you're not into it, or we can make some changes." And 83 students were part of this survey, and 100% of the kids said, "Yeah, we like this, we want to continue it." So knowing that, I was going to be speaking with you tonight. Last week, I gave them another survey, asking some pretty similar questions. This is after 10 or 11 circles we've run now. 83 kids responded, once again, 100% of the kids said, "Yes, we like this and we want to continue it." Another question I asked them was, "Well, what about the frequency of it? Do you want to do it once a week, every other week?" And 85% of the kids said, "Let's do this, let's do this once a week," while 15% said that they preferred biweekly. I have some responses that the students shared with you. Before that, here's another student testimonial.
I feel, I feel like it's a place where I can express my feelings, and it's like a happy place where I can go to.
It really makes you feel like people actually care about you, the spotlight's on you, and you can really say what you're feeling.
I have found that people seem more positive during class because Ms. Carter... because Ms. Carter lets us let our feelings out. And I've found that we've learned more and became closer as a class.
I feel like we're less stressed out and like, we like, all express what we feel. So we get all that emotions out.
So part of my last survey that I gave to the students just last week was asking them, "What is it do you like about this? Actually, what do you think is important about it? Why should we continue it?" And a lot of their responses reflected a few themes. One theme was, it helped them relax, especially on a Monday. If it's a Monday morning that it happens to fall on. Kind of sets the tone for the rest of their day and even their week. Some other students talked about the idea of togetherness, that they're learning things about their classmates that they never would have known. That they're getting to share things about themselves that they probably wouldn't have shared otherwise. And personally, I feel the same way, that I'm making connections with kids in a different way this year than I have in the past. Because maybe I'm sharing a part of myself that I wouldn't have outside of these circles. And some of the students also said that not only does it help them relax during that time of the circle, but also for the rest of that class period as we transition. Like I said, it's about 15 to 20 minutes that we take out of time once a week or once every other week. But once that's over, we have a class, we have a lesson to go to. And it helps them make that transition. The circles that I've been running in my class have been more community-based circles. And you saw on the previous slide that there are many different types of circles. And this is Fern. Actually, wait, there's one more video testimony, but she has a different type of circle to share with you. So I'll play for this, this for you and then I'll let Ms. Fern talk to you.
So when we do circles, students get to collaborate and talk about their social life. And students can relate to each other and connect. And it's really nice because it's a way to relax and we don't get a lot of schoolwork. But it's short, so we can still get work done after.
So the circles help us relax, I feel. And afterwards, like, there is a difference in everyone's mindsets because we're relaxed and not like really unfocused because of the workload and we're like concentrated on getting work done.
Hello, I'm here to talk to you about restorative circles this evening. The purpose of restorative circles is to right a wrong or solve a classroom problem. I was teaching a small class, or I'm still teaching math. And this class was demonstrating extreme behavioral difficulties. I've been 24 years of special education at DOD in Cheshire and I have 35 years of teaching experience in all in special education. The reason why I include that data is to let you know that this was not my first year of teaching and I've dealt with some extreme behavior before. At the time, I kind of was at my wit's end, so I asked John to help me and two of the counselors to implement a restorative circle with me. So when you carry out a restorative circle, the point is to try to change the behavior. So in the circle, the students all made promises for their changing their behavior in the class. One student made no disrespectful eye motions. One of the students said they would give math and myself a chance. I had a guy who was always cracking everybody up and he said he would stop being the funny man. One of my students was really, most of them don't have a lot of confidence in math, but they wanted to develop more self-confidence. Another student wanted to stop whining and stay positive. And I had one student who was very positive and just maintained that positivity. My restorative promise was to keep being positive and find better ways to teach the students. And my counselors both took on counseling the students in math and visiting class. And Mr. Ferrisino took on my administrator to visit the class and to remind the students of our group restorative promises. So I maintained some data while I was running the circles. So I had the students write their happiness in math in the pre-circle. And as you can see, most of the ratings were pretty low, averaging 1s and 2s. After the second circle we had, the scores went up considerably. We saw 2, 3, and 3 points of growth in that area. And more importantly, looking at their grade averages from pre-circle time to post-circle in March. And we've carried out three restorative circles since then to maintain our promises and to remind ourselves of our promises, especially if behavior starts slipping. So you can see the point growth in all has been wonderful. So the positive outcomes of our restorative process, the behavior is extremely improved in the classroom. We don't have hardly, we have not nearly as many disruptions or off-task behavior. Our attitudes and participation is improved by 2 points per student and average. The students' grades have improved by an average of 9.2. My attitude improved from a 1 to a 4. The students, and most importantly, these last two I feel are the most important, students feel supported by a community of people who promise to support their learning and assist them through their struggles. And as we know, these special ed students struggle a lot in math and it's an area of contention for them. So this was really positive for them. It is also a way to teach appropriate behaviors and not just provide consequences for maladaptive behaviors.
Thank you very much. So basically from there, you know, what are we looking for as a school to do with this? And what are our next steps? We know that we have the consultant Joe Brummer that we've been working with and we want to continue to work with him and helping us to create an approach to kind of, we have our restorative committee in the school and how we can take the practices that the restorative committee has learned and kind of have our teachers that were trained to become trainers at this point and in their own way help to spread these restorative practices throughout our schools because we see that they're having some great benefits. We also want to kind of develop what that rollout plan might look like as we extend it. We want to offer workshops. Restorative practices is not something that's just unique to Joe Brummer as an expert. This is something that is really being talked about in the field of education. And we know that the, our different regional service centers are providing professional workshops to help provide teachers with these trainings. The state is also providing these workshops. So we want to, we want to be able to send our people out and get some more experts so we can grow these practices. We want to continue to collaborate with Cheshire High School. I think it was probably one of the unintended consequences of bringing the high school and the middle school teachers together in circle as it really formed some great bonds. And I would say that relationships from those trainings really changed between teachers that had never known each other before or teachers that knew of each other but never really had that opportunity to get to know each other. And then we want to maintain our communication with the community about how these approaches are working, how we can further support kids. I think a common theme, hopefully, that you can hear going through, through all our teachers, are the ideas of relationship building, student to student, relationship building, student to teacher, that connectedness to DOD Middle School, making kids feel welcome. Hopefully those themes and the theme of support really came through as you heard our three teachers speak.
So I just want to say a very huge thank you to our four presenters this evening. So thank you very much, Penelope. For the six days of sub-plans, for trying this out and kind of not really expecting this in August, but they really have done a great job. Our complete group is, as you can see, we really diversified too between 7th and 8th grade teachers. We have unified arts teachers across grade levels, excuse me, across subject areas as well, school counselors, administrators. So really want to say a special thank you to our entire group. They're really doing a fantastic job and they've been great to work with so far this year. So with that, if there are any questions? Yes?
I was just wondering, how often does yours, do you have circles? Do you have some fly me through your?
I have two start classes where I have small groups of special education students. I run community building circles every single day. Usually before the class starts, it's usually a 5 to 7 minute before start class starts. And then the kids are ready to work. So we do an emotional check and the mindful minute and move the talking piece around. We also do a gratitude statement.
Okay, with the plan B, to try to do it every, every class or every team? Or how, what game do you plan to roll with everything?
Well, I think, you know, in kind of talking with Tracy and kind of talking about, you could see the numbers to the need for this type of thing. I think down the road, that would be an ultimate goal, that that is really the foundation, the roots of what we're about here at DOD Middle School. Other schools who do this, they call themselves restorative schools. And as you can see, there's a lot of positivity that has been so far attached to this. So absolutely that would be a goal for us to eventually get this throughout. And it's not just about the classroom, restorative practices also happen outside the classroom, how we work in the cafeteria, how we work in the office, all those types of things. So it really is something that encapsulates the entire period of the school.
So did you feel a change in the mindset within your classroom after you started the process, like, within students?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, I think that again, it created a closeness. I think that there were more bonds. I think there was some more understanding of maybe kids and their background and their preferences, their interests. It's been very positive, you know, the kids like it. And it's beyond just, we're taking 15 minutes outside of academic learning. Because for a middle school student, maybe that might be inebriated. But there's true meaning behind it and the connections that they make. And to be completely honest with you, I was a bit of a skeptic at first before I went to this training. I went to it to try something new, try something different. And now I'm a believer in it because I see it in practice. And absolutely, I think the kids' relationships are closer as a result and our classes are closer.
I think what you find with the students too, when you're, when they open themselves up to these ideas and these circles, is they end up finding that they have more commonality with one another than they ever really realize. They think all the time it's, "I'm the sport kid, or I'm the band kid, I'm the art kid." And what they really do is come together on those commonalities and understand that we have much more similarities than we really do differences. And I think that the kids really start to realize that and that's where you start to see that big change.
You're the only one in the room that really does know any more. We all know what this is. No questions? Thank you again to all of you guys, I really appreciate it. Thank you all for coming to our showcase this evening, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Mike, and to your team and to the DOD staff. And our entire, as I said, our entire administrative team went through the restorative circle training. And I think what resonates for us is that we appreciate that empathy and education are really at the foundation of breaking down ignorance. And as you heard, this experience allows our students to build much greater empathy for each other and understanding of each other. And I think John just summarized that so well. The other thing is, you know, you may hear people say, "Wow, this is, you know, what is this bunk?" You know, just, you know, people, they're just talking, they're wasting time. Maslow's hierarchy needs, it's very basic, particularly for a middle school student. If you don't feel you belong, it's hard to achieve. And, you know, this really resonated with us for that reason as well. That this supports kids and staff even, belonging with one another. And that is very powerful. And I think you heard that not just from our staff tonight, but from some of our students. And we're excited for that reason, that it is bringing our community closer together. And this, we're obviously at the beginning of this process. But we hope to continue this process toward that end and we look forward to having more outstanding results like we've already seen. So I appreciate everybody's attendance here tonight. And thank you guys very much. And pass it back to Ms. Sobel for her motion.
Thank you very much. And thank you again, that was really, really interesting. And I totally understand the importance of, you know, you're really building communities on a smaller level and then it branches out to a larger level. But anyway. Do we have a motion? All in favor? We are adjourned, thank you very much.